Welcome candidates and you who are in the audience and those viewing at home. As a courtesy to all present, please silence your cell phones. This is a primary election candidate forum for District A seat on the Iowa City Council. All candidates have been invited to participate in this forum. I am Joan Cook, a member of the League of Women Voters of Johnson County, and I will be the moderator for this evening's forum. The forum is being livestreamed on the League's Facebook page. It's also being filmed for rebroadcasting on the public channel in Iowa City. Please check their website for scheduling. The recording will also be available on the League's Facebook page. Additional information about the candidates may be found on the League's vote411.org website. The League of Women Voters is a volunteer, nonpartisan organization that neither supports nor opposes any party or candidate, which is why we have the policy that campaign literature is welcome outside the room following the forum, and no buttons or signs or literature may be worn or distributed inside this room. We ask that no questions or outbursts come directly from the audience. The League supports the free and open exchange of ideas through civil discourse. Please hold your applause until the end of the forum. The League does take positions after considerable study of issues and acts to influence decision-makers on these issues. We work to not only register voters but also to provide them with information on issues to assist their participation in government. Membership is open to anyone 16 years of age and older. Join us, we can use your time, your talent, and your financial resources. League members advocate and inform voters. Democracy works best when more people are involved. Membership forms are available at our welcome table near the entrance, or find us at www.lwvjc.org. The views expressed in this forum are those of the candidates. All viable candidates have been invited to participate. After candidates have been introduced, they will each have two minutes for opening remarks. We will then present questions to them, starting with the one from the League, followed by one submitted on your cards in the audience. League members are distributing cards and pencils for you to write your questions. You may submit as many written questions as you wish. Then hold up the cards and the League members will collect them throughout the forum. Questions that fall in the same general category may be consolidated. If time does not allow for all questions to be addressed, you may contact the candidates directly after the forum or at another time. Each question will be asked for all candidates. Each candidate will have one minute to respond to each question. Due to the timeframe, there will not be time for rebuttals. Near the end of the scheduled time, this event, each candidate will also have two minutes for closing remarks. Speaking order will be rotated throughout the evening. Bonnie Boothroyd will serve as a timekeeper and will alert candidates when the time is about to end. There are three candidates in this primary election to be held on October 10th. Two will advance to November 7th election. Candidates for this District A City Council ballot are Laura Burgas, Tim Borchardt, and Pauline Taylor. Audience members, please write your questions on the cards provided and provide them to the League members. Let's get started with opening statements. Please speak directly into the microphone so you can be heard here and over the television Laura, would you like to begin with your two-minute opening?
Wonderful. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here. My name is Laura Burgas, and I am running for reelection to the Iowa City City Council. I've been serving since 2020, and when I was elected and started my term in that year, you may remember, right at the beginning of 2020, there was a pandemic. Soon after that, in the summer of 2020, there were months of sustained protest after the murder of George Floyd. I take great pride in the ways that I have contributed to the Iowa City City Council during my first term. I authored the 16-point resolution in response to the Black Lives Matter movement. I helped with my colleague Janice Weiner in the creation of the Truth and Reconciliation Commission, and I have led on a number of other issues such as transportation and climate action. I'm seeking a second term on Iowa City City Council because I believe I am well-suited for this job. Professionally, I am an attorney and a mediator, and I wear that mediation hat most of the times that I'm up on the dais. Our role as policymakers and leaders in this community is to help find common ground. We have so much common ground. We have so many things on which we agree, and we should be focusing on those to move our community forward. Right now, in this moment, when the state of Iowa government has different ideas about what is appropriate for our children, in our schools, for our libraries, we have to stand together and act collectively to improve our community. That's why I'm asking for your support in District A and the election on October 10th or before. Thank you so much.
Tim Borchardt, am I pronouncing your name?
Borchardt.
Borchardt, thank you.
Thank you. I'm pleased to be here tonight. I have lived in Iowa City now 34 years. I grew up Washington, Iowa, and went to a couple of years junior college, and as young most adults do, went looking for the greener grass around the country. Eventually, when I found out that there was no greener grass than right around my home, I came back. I dropped into North Liberty with four, 500 bucks in my pocket, stopped in a sleeping room, and ended up grabbing a job at a local factory. Ended up working my way up into supervisory position. A friend of mine and I were driving around looking for an apartment after things settled down. We ended up looking at the Broadway Street Apartments, and at that time, new to the area, I said, "Oh, those look pretty good. Why don't we go in and check them out?" And my friend said, "You don't want to live there." I didn't really pursue it, but that's what occurred. So, ended up going to work, buying a house over by Grantwood School. I have two kids that both went through Grantwood, which was considered an at-risk school. One's now in southeast and one's in City High. Last couple of years, my wife and I decided I could be a Mr. Mom, take care of the kids. We had done well enough together that it was the right thing to do. My folks didn't have time to spend time with my brother and sister when they were young. It was a different type. I'm running for city council because I've had enough of the crime in this city. I've had enough of the panhandlers, the vagrants, the thugs, the gang-bang wannabes. I personally think that we need to clean this up. We once had a city that you worried about the drunken college kids. Now it's the crime. Thank you for your time, and I appreciate your vote.
Pauline?
Thank you, and thank you to the League of Women Voters for holding this forum. I'm pleased to see such interest in city council elections. Traditionally, it's very low turnout for these elections. I grew up in Des Moines, but I have lived in Iowa City for 49 years now. I graduated from Abraham Lincoln High School in Des Moines, which was just listed again as one of the largest high schools in Iowa. Going to such a large school, I learned early on the importance of the need to stand up to be seen and heard. I came from a family with three generations of nurses, so it was always my dream to be a nurse. I came to Iowa City to attend the University of Iowa College of Nursing, which recently received one of the highest ratings in the country for being a high-quality school. I'm very proud of my alma mater and cherish the many things that I learned while I was a student there. Besides building on my values and morals, I learned the importance of listening to what a person has to say. Shortly after graduating with a BSN from the College of Nursing, I began my employment at the University of Iowa Hospitals and Clinics, where I worked as a staff nurse for 38 years before retiring in 2012. A few years after retiring from the hospital, I decided to run for the Iowa City City Council. I was first elected to the District A seat in 2016, won reelection in 2020, and served as Mayor Pro Tem from 2018 to 2020 under Mayor Jim Throgmorton. I'm now in my second term as the incumbent in District A. I'm running for reelection to that seat. As a nurse, I'm concerned about the health, safety, and well-being of all members of our community. I see the community as a living, breathing body, and as a nurse, I can relate to taking care of the whole body. Over the past few years, the council has made significant strides in a number of areas that help to assure that care, but there is still a lot of work to be done, and I'd love to be able to continue to be a part of that work.
Thank you. Okay, first question from the League of Women Voters. Iowa City is a relatively expensive community for housing. What solutions do you suggest to provide more affordable housing options in the city? We'll rotate the responses. Ms. Burgas?
Sure. Affordable housing is an incredibly complex issue. We know that, and there is no single solution to improving affordability in our community. I would say one of the things that's come before council a number of times during my first term has been the opportunity to increase housing supply. We know that countywide, there are tens of thousands of units fewer than the demand that we have for them, and so something that distinguishes me from Councilor Taylor is that I will consistently vote in favor of the opportunity to create more housing in our community. In addition to the opportunity to create more housing, we also have to be looking at what the incentives can be for creating that housing and making sure that housing that exists now isn't driven up in price by forces that we can influence. We know that the state of Iowa has implemented a number of restrictions on our capacity to try and make housing more affordable, and that's why we're somewhat limited in what we're able to do, but we have a plan that we're executing since, thank you, 2016.
Thank you. Mr. Borchardt?
The first thing I'd look at is the rules and regulations that the city imposes upon building. What is it that we have in place that may cause additional costs for affordable housing? Once that is determined, we can't control interest rates or price. Also, we need to look at the assessment for the land values. Once we get to the bottom line of how much it costs to actually build a house in Iowa City, then we can move forward.
Thank you. Ms. Taylor?
We've been talking about this issue for many, many years, and as Laura said, there's just no real good fix to it. There are many steps that we've done towards achieving more units in the community. One was as developers are building certain parts of the community, riverfront crossings and with annexation areas, requiring 10% of their units to be affordable, and I think that's taken a major step towards getting more units. I also am supportive of encouraging more diverse types, fourplexes, duplexes, and my very favorite are tiny homes. I've been talking, although I've been told tiny is kind of deceptive, it's small homes, but I visited a community in Bartlesville, Oklahoma, that had a whole neighborhood of tiny homes, and if they can do it, we can do it. So I think that that's one thing we can do. We have other innovative ways, like for chronically homeless, we've got the 501 project, as well as Cross Park Place, because that's also very helpful to get those folks off the streets and into housing.
Thank you. Please tell me your local knowledge of local crime stats. Why do you think these crimes happen, and what are the roots of these issues in your opinion? Mr. Borchardt?
Well, in my opinion, the reason that we have the crimes that we do is because there's a perception that come to Iowa City, and the worst thing that's going to happen is you're going to get slapped on the wrist. The revolving door from the police into the jails and out for minor crimes is a joke. We need to actually allow people to come in here who are willing to abide by the rules, and if they're not, we need to make sure they understand that's what they have to do.
Ms. Taylor?
I think sometimes it gets lost in the shuffle that an underlying, very important part of this are mental health issues. A lot of these folks out on the streets or causing trouble, so to speak, do have underlying mental health issues, and I think that's something that the community really needs to look at and find other options for helping to treat these folks.
Ms. Burgas?
Iowa City remains one of the safest cities, and compared to other communities that are college towns, for example, and other cities of our size throughout the nation, we have very low crime per capita and also the types of crimes. And so I think there is a misperception, maybe, that crime has been increasing, or yeah, that is something that we need to be talking more truthfully about. As far as the underlying issues, I think, you know, most crime is based on people not having their needs met, and whether that's food insecurity, or trauma from their childhood, or, you know, situations that lead people into desperate measures. I do think that the local government has a role in trying to address those underlying issues as well. So I've really been focusing on preventing crime and more than on the punishment end.
Thank you. How can the relationship of local and state government be improved? Mr. Borchardt?
Starts with communication. Over the years, the Iowa City leaders have thought that different issues needed to be addressed, which were in direct violation of state law, but they pushed ahead to begin with. First thing I can remember was the smoking ban, which got slapped down, the raising of the minimum wage, the pandemic requirements. The city leaders need to communicate and try to find common ground with the state government.
Ms. Taylor?
And I think one way that we can do that is to try to meet on a regular basis. We're kind of sheltered, and I'll just add, in Johnson County and Iowa City, we have some great elected officials that we have a good relationship with, but I think that's really important. We used to have what was called home rule, and the state sort of has been gradually taking that away from the communities to be able to make decisions. One of those things, I tell the story of the Hundred Grannies that were working with the city to ban plastic bags, and the city was on the verge of doing that, and the state got wind of it and banned, of all sorts, banned banning plastic bags. I mean, it just sounds ridiculous, but it did indeed happen, but those are the kinds of things that maybe if we had worked with some of those elected officials and explained why, and showed the pictures Hundred Granny showed to us.
Thank you. What are the three biggest issues facing the council? And, sorry?
The question again was about the state government relationship, yes?
Yes.
Sorry.
I'm sorry. The relationship between the local and state government.
Thank you. Thank you. So, we do have very strong relationships with our local elected officials, and I take great pride in my relationship with our state Senator Janice Weiner, who's very, very skilled at working across the aisle and getting things done in Des Moines. So I know that having leaders in Des Moines who have served at the city level, so they really understand what the challenges are within municipalities, is really important, and I think just keeping those relationships going is how we'll continue to work to improve those relationships.
Thank you. What are the three biggest issues facing the council, and how would you address those? Ms. Taylor?
Sometimes kind of hard to narrow it down to just three. There are so many, and some of them interrelate, because we talk about childcare as being a really big issue, and there are groups in the city and the county that are working to fix that, increase the pay for those workers, and provide opportunities, places for people to take their children, but that goes into sometimes the workforce. People are finding it hard to get workers, people to come to work for them, and also that relates to the affordable housing issue, which is also, I think, really top on the list of those big issues.
Ms. Burgas?
I'll maybe zoom this out quite a bit and say, climate change, fascism, and maybe just the cost of living in our community and everything that comes with that. We spoke about the relationship with the state government, but I think it's critically important that the local government works hard to let people know that we can be trusted, that the local government is working with good intent, that we are accessible, that we will be transparent, and that we can actually talk about issues, that we will be able to address within our own community. Just in my time on council, I've seen that change dramatically in terms of how people approach their government and the level of distrust. Climate action, obviously, we have the Accelerated Climate Action Plan that we are implementing now, and everything relating to the cost of living in our community, as Councilor Taylor mentioned, childcare, affordable housing. Transportation is a huge cost for households. Approximately 25% of income is spent on transportation in Johnson County.
Thank you. Mr. Borchardt?
The three things that I believe are a priority or a problem in this community is city affordability, the overall cost to live here, property taxes, and crime. Maybe in some parts of the city, it's all rainbows and lollipops. In the part of the city that I live in, I've personally had a murder within three or four blocks of my house. I've had six houses where there's been 10 to 20 shells put in the road. I talked to a lady the other day in our area, and she said, "You know, I keep a gun in my house because I'm scared. I don't want anybody to know that." But she's a 65-year-old retired lady. So, as though some parts of the city may be great, there are other parts that are not so good, and that's where I live.
Gun violence disproportionately impacts the minority community. How would you pledge to address gun violence prevention efforts in Iowa City? Ms. Burgas?
We need to take seriously the opportunities that we have for community violence interruption. We know that there's federal money for that purpose, and in Johnson County have just started to undertake a program that is aimed at reaching into the community to meet people where they are and address some of those underlying causes of gun violence. This, again, is an issue where the state of Iowa has limited our capacity to regulate, as well as the United States Supreme Court, but I think we need to be working with our partners like Moms Demand Action and those who are working directly with individuals who may be involved in cycles and situations where they may be more likely to have access to guns, and we need to be promoting gun safety for anyone who owns a firearm in their homes.
Mr. Borchardt?
For anyone that comes into our community, brings guns in, mostly illegal, when they're caught, they need to be charged as a federal crime and sent to prison. The word needs to get out that we're not a bunch of hicks, that people can come into our community and try to run over us. There are plenty of legal gun owners here who put safety first. We need to support our police in getting these people off the streets.
Ms. Taylor?
I think that it's difficult to predict where a crime is going to happen. Over the past year or so, it's been obvious that it's occurred in all parts of the city, not just originally, as Mr. Borchardt had mentioned, that in the Southern-South District there had been a lot of crime, although when I was campaigning, I met a couple that were sitting out in their front yard off of Taylor Drive, and they said they'd moved from Chicago because they just weren't comfortable in Chicago, but they were comfortable sitting on their front yard there on Taylor Drive, and I thought that was really great. I think, again, going back to mental health, it's very important that we strengthen those mental health resources in our community. Too many have been taken away from us, and these folks are struggling, and they need help.
How would you handle the issues with the homeless in our area? Mr. Borchardt?
Well, public space is public space. In this community, we've decided that everyone is entitled to use public space, and that is true, but we do not and should not allow people to dominate public space. For every person that's using public space and stopping me or you from using it, they're infringing on my right to the public space. If someone is camping out or taking up a lot of time in one space, we need to have our law enforcement come through and move them along.
Ms. Taylor?
I'm very proud of the 501 project, that's called the Housing First Project, the 501 and the Cross Park Place. Those were chronically homeless folks that didn't qualify for the shelter for one reason or another, either they had a drug problem or alcohol problem, and they just couldn't live there. And the first one that opened on Cross Park was 24 units, and the second one, 501 Project, was 36 units. They have medical folks on site in these buildings, and it's my understanding that it's cut down on the numbers of folks that are being transported either to jail or to the hospital, and I think that's a wonderful thing, and I would be very supportive of any program that would continue those. And again, I'm going to go back to the mental health issue. I've heard some of these folks have mental health issues. They just, they don't want to be put in a home. They don't want to live anywhere. They're happy where they are, and that's difficult.
Ms. Burgas?
The city needs to continue its support of organizations like Shelter House and Community Crisis Services to be able to help our neighbors who don't have homes. I've never been in a public space where I felt like an unhoused person was dominating that space or interfering with my use or enjoyment of that space, and every one of those individuals has a story and a background and a right to be in our community. So we'll continue to support those providers who can provide permanent supportive housing, as well as transitional housing, as well as programs, for example, to help people reintegrate into society after incarceration, and I believe this year the city will be funding the winter shelter in a way that is more robust than we have in the past as well.
What city services would you consider core services that should be funded before considering strategic changes? Ms. Taylor?
Well, if you're referring to those such things as the utilities, we realized that during COVID, when a lot of folks were out of work and didn't have the money to pay for their utilities, but we as a city and the council decided to help those folks and did not disconnect their water, didn't have them pay their bill, and I think that was very important, because that water is essential for people to live, as well as refuse. I think that's been very helpful to continue that and to even increase their duties with the recycling, and I would say those are very important, and we'd have to continue those.
Ms. Burgas?
All of our core services should be influenced by our strategic decisions. So every service that the city provides should be, I think the question was strategic changes, but the strategic plan that we have and the lenses through which we make all of our policy decisions should impact our core services directly. So it's just not a matter of first this, then something else. It is the way that we deliver clean water, the way that we repair the streets, the way that we provide bus service, the way that our public library operates. Everything that the city does needs to be done through, based on the priorities and the values that are espoused in our strategic plan.
Mr. Borchardt?
The two must services of this community are the police and the fire department. Then you can break off into garbage collection, water, stuff like that. After you get by the first two priorities that are must-haves, everything else can be up for negotiations.
Has Iowa City made sufficient progress on Black Lives Matter proposals and Truth and Reconciliation Commission? Ms. Burgas?
No, not yet. The city allocated $1 million in the summer of 2020 towards these initiatives and have spent less than half of that so far. I'm very, very proud of the work that the- I'm very, very proud of the work that the Truth and Reconciliation Commission is doing now. Tomorrow night, in this room, there will be another great step in the work that they are undertaking with the support of professional facilitators. But no, we have not done enough, and I believe we've taken that out of the front of our priorities and need to be bringing that back.
Okay, Mr. Borchart?
I think the Truth and Reconciliation Commission was created to try to take pressure off of the city council, to try to pacify those who are upset with the city. We have hired someone to come in and find flaws, racism, whatever you want to call it, in our government and our community. And I find it hard to believe that a city that's been run by mostly liberal Democrats and progressives for all these years would have put those policies in place.
Ms. Taylor?
As Counselor Burgess said, we haven't made a lot of progress yet, but it's moving in the right direction. I serve on the Rules Committee for the council, and we just, this morning, approved the bylaws that the TRC finally has written, which is a major step in what we've been asking them to do. As was mentioned, the consultant came in, and they've had what they call circles. I didn't really understand circles previously, but apparently those are being very helpful in people actually opening up and talking about any problems that they've had, what they feel was racism. And the truth and the reconciliation, the reconciliation part of it is what I'm looking forward to happening very soon.
Do you think Iowa City did the right thing with the free bus program? And should the city fund it after two years?
Mr. Borchart?
I think it was a good test start. We used COVID money. The part of it that I have an issue with is that upfront, there wasn't a pay for after the COVID money ran out. If we're unable to find something without raising taxes, that would be great. But my estimation is that we'll just stick the taxpayers with more bills and have, when it's all said and done, inconclusive value of free buses.
Ms. Taylor?
I definitely approve of the fact that we went with the fare-free for the two years, and I'm hoping that after that, we'll be able to find ways to fund it. We usually seem to manage to do that kind of thing. It falls under, as Laura Burgess mentioned, our strategic plan. One of the items is mobility and getting the folks out there, getting them being able to get to work. And we'd heard so many complaints about that it was difficult for them for folks to pay when they get on the bus and have to struggle to dig the change out of their purse, and that took time from the bus drivers also. We just heard today that ridership was up, I think, 56% since we started the fare-free system. So I think that's good, getting people out there, getting them more mobile. I have some ideas about the weekend and night shifts that perhaps we can do some sort of a voucher system or something to get folks transportation to.
Ms. Burgess?
Yes, very, very excited about the fare-free and definitely want to prioritize keeping it after the two-year pilot program. Yeah, we did just hear that ridership is up more than 50% in just the first month. I myself have been riding the bus quite a bit since the fare-free, and I noticed people, you know, hopping on and off even for short distances. And when you think about what that means for the improvement of mobility for people in our community, it's just tremendous. So I do think that this is something we're going to have to find a way to keep.
How important is land set aside for the environment and recreational purposes?
Ms. Taylor?
It's interesting that you would ask that because I think that it's very important. A vote just came before the city council not long ago with a property out on the far southwest side. A family had donated a large amount of property to be a park at some point in time when none of the family members are living there any longer. And a business had come in and wanted to develop on a corner portion of that land, and it came before the council, and I was not in favor of that. I don't approve of corporations being on the verge of the parks. They should be enjoyed by the people. Another vote that came up was the Hickory Hill Park, where there was a development coming in there, a very large development. And I was one of the first votes against that. We heard from the residents, they looked at the comp plan, they looked at the zoning, and said that it doesn't follow that, and it's taking part of the Hickory Hill Park space. But in the long run, we got that space back.
Ms. Burgess?
Yeah, I think the question was, how important is it to set aside land for parks and recreation and the environment? Again, all land use decisions should include, and our codes require, that there be land set aside as green space and that there are regulations around how that land can be used. We have a very complete and in-depth Sensitive Areas Ordinance, which regulates the ways in which slopes and waterways and woodlands can be impacted or cannot be impacted in the city when land uses change. I do think that having, you know, investments in parks and recreation, trails, and other even mobility uses such as bike lanes and that kind of thing, I think it all goes together in needing to be a mobile and active community and really imbuing the natural areas in everything. All of the land use decisions, I think, need to take those things into account.
Mr. Borchart?
There needs to be a nice balance between green space and future development.
How would you support union organizations in Iowa City?
Ms. Burgess?
I voted in favor of all of the union contracts that have come before the city council, and I believe that we do a good job of negotiating in good faith at the city council level, as far as we negotiate well beyond just the mandatory subjects for our unions that had many of their rights stripped away when Chapter 20 was modified at the state level. As far as organizing in private sectors, you know, I think the city has been a leader in supporting the pressure that we can put on, for example, businesses joining the county's minimum wage, even when, again, that can't be mandated. We can be voices in support of workers' rights, even if we don't have a lot of regulatory control.
On this particular issue, my positions have evolved over the years. Currently, with the labor market the way it is, I'll stand behind the private sector unions. The workers have been held back for years in their growth of wages. Now it's a worker's market. We need to pay people what they're worth. As far as public sector unions negotiating with cities, I'm not sure the people that are trying to get elected should be negotiating with the unions themselves. I would feel more comfortable with more of an arbitrator-type, a neutral person negotiating those contracts.
Ms. Taylor?
Some of you in the audience will know this is an easy question for me. It's well-known that, and I'm proud to admit, that I've been a member of organized labor for many years, almost 30 years. Very proud that I was one of the initial organizers of SEIU. Very proud of that union. It's made major strides at the hospital and for the workers there. I've always been about helping the little person, the worker. I participated recently, you mentioned the community. I participated recently in the picket line for the Starbucks workers, and they're continuing to have struggles, and I will continue to support them in their efforts, as well as COGS and their efforts with the hospital, and SEIU with the hospital, and our city employees also.
Thank you. The proposed zoning code has been described by some as a windfall for landlords. We do support requiring and incentivizing regulations. Ms. Burgess?
Well, I don't believe that the proposed zoning code changes are a windfall for landlords. I do support incentivizing increases in density, affordability. For example, in some of those proposed changes, if there is a certain level of affordability in what is being constructed, then the developer can waive a certain amount of parking, for example. So I am in favor of those changes, and I think it's really important that we influence where we can to, again, increase supply in the market and incentivize where we're able to.
About 12 years ago, the city put in place an Affordable Housing Regulation that stated if a area had 50% of free or reduced lunches, that the city would try to build in other areas, spread it out. That seems to have went by the wayside. The city council voted to repeal that. As far as the new zoning, I think that by repealing that 50% regulation, the city council is just greasing the skids to put more affordable housing in the areas that are already full of affordable housing and leave areas in other parts of the city untouched.
Ms. Taylor?
I do have some concerns about what was recently presented to council regarding some changes in the zoning code. I don't believe, though, that it's a windfall for landlords. I think it's going to be helpful in increasing the housing types in the city because there's language in there about duplexes and fourplexes, and as I've mentioned, little tiny homes, those kinds of things. So it really increases that, and I think it'll benefit that, the whole missing middle concept that we've been talking about for the last couple of years that hopefully we'll get to see.
How would you work with other Johnson County metro community leaders to create a unified approach to community planning, recreation, and economic development?
Mr. Borchart?
In working with other communities around the area, I would treat them as equals, looking for some of the best ideas that they may have, as well as trying to put forth any ideas that Iowa City has and try to reach consensus on a plan.
Ms. Taylor?
Could you repeat the question, please?
How would you work with other Johnson County metro community leaders to create a unified approach to community planning, recreation, and economic development?
We have in this area what we call a Joint Entities Committee, that the board of supervisors members, the school board members, and the various city councils, including University Heights, meet on a regular basis, and we discuss what's going on in our communities and talk about what maybe we can help each other with and encourage them or discourage them.
Ms. Borchart? Did you answer that? Ms. Borchart? Did you start? No, you did. Uh, Burgess, I'm sorry.
I think it's my turn. Okay.
Yeah, that's what I was trying to say.
There's a new community development organization that came out of a community-wide visioning process. It's called Better Together 2030, and that is a fantastic vehicle for exactly this kind of collaborative work. I have spent a lot of energy during my first term on council in collaborating with local leaders from the cities of North Liberty, Corroville, the county of Johnson County, the University of Iowa, working with UIHC relating to, again, regional transportation. I do think that also the merged economic development entity that is called Greater Iowa City Incorporated will serve a role in that as well. And I know that the city will be communicating with and working with that organization. But I think the Better Together 2030 is super exciting and is going to let us collaborate better than we probably ever have before. As someone who's been watching these local politics for a long time, I really do see that happening now.
Thank you.
Do you think we need to build affordable housing throughout the city or only in certain neighborhoods?
Mr. Borchart?
I think it needs to be spread out throughout the community. We have done like the Field of Dreams with the new 501 and stuff right there behind Waterfront Hy-Vee, and the effects of that area have been horrendous. 10 days ago, I was getting ready to walk into the store, and one of the vagrants sitting there threw up right in front of the door. Two weeks ago, the police were called for a person peeing in the parking lot. A month ago, they had a naked man in the parking lot. Nine months ago, they had to call him because they refused to sell alcohol to someone who had too much to drink, and they pulled a knife on him. In my part of the world, those things are regular activities. It needs to be spread out throughout the city.
Ms. Taylor?
I agree that it needs to be spread out throughout the city. Particularly, I am very proud of the South District program, which is geared towards gaining homeownership for some individuals. I would like to see that program spread throughout the city. Currently, it's just in that South District and those homes off of Taylor Drive that are duplexes that were formerly rentals, but as they've come up for sale, the city has purchased them with our Affordable Housing Funds and allowed folks to move into these homes and through the banks, learn homeownership and get financing. And it's an excellent program, and it's moving in the right direction. But I'd like to see it throughout the city.
Ms. Burgess?
Absolutely want to see it throughout the city. I also just want to note that I lived for eight years on the same street as Mr. Borchart and have lived for 20 years about three blocks away from him. And my experience of that area is quite different than his. But yes, we definitely need affordable housing throughout the entirety of the city.
What methods have you found effective for making systemic change, and how do you know that they've been effective?
I think she starts.
Do we need clarification on that question?
That would be nice, I guess.
How do you make it?
Systemic change?
Well, I think we need to hear from folks of what kind of change they'd like to see and work with the system, those folks that we have, the nonprofits or whatever entity is necessary to bring about that change. We would need to do that, but we'd like to hear from people about what they think needs to be changed.
Ms. Burgess?
My, and folks, Janice Weiner again. How do you eat an elephant one bite at a time, right? So systemic change does tend to happen incrementally, but it's all about relationships. Every person has the opportunity and the power to help make change. I think I said before, collective action is something that throughout human history has pretty much been the way in which we make systemic change. So engaging the community, helping people know that they do have a voice, that they do have the power to influence policy, that they do have the power to, you know, help people in our positions know what is best for the city. I think that's really what it's about. So I, yeah, we're going to keep working towards systemic change. And how do we know it's effective? Because we measure it, we talk to people, we look at it, we observe before and after. I really don't think it's that scary.
Thank you.
Most people are afraid of change. If we want to make change, we simply have to be open and willing to make a change, if it makes sense for the people that are offering suggestions.
What represents a safe gun law?
Ms. Taylor?
Well, I hate to keep going back to the mental health issue, but I think strengthening those requirements and those measures taken when a person applies to have a gun. I just, something funny, just saw on Facebook that Trump wanted a gun, but he has a felony or something, so he really isn't supposed to have one. But those kinds of things, strengthening that, the requirements for whether you have any type of mental illness, age, obviously, and proof of age. Can't think of what else. Those are the most important things, I would think, that we need to do.
Ms. Burgess?
I think what makes a safe gun law is any regulation that decreases the likelihood of violence or misuse of a firearm. So there are many, many ways in which that can happen. And, you know, once again, there are limitations to what the city can do. One thing that we have been doing is encouraging private businesses who have not been prohibited from banning firearms from their own property, from doing that. So that is something that the city has promoted, even though it's not a law that we can pass and we can't regulate it within city buildings. But just trying to, again, spread the word as to what individual businesses can do on that front and trying to find ways to ensure safety among gun storage and gun access.
The best way to try to move forward is fully prosecute those who The best way to try to move forward is fully prosecute those who commit crimes using a firearm. Those who have decided that we're not going to allow firearms to come in here, that is their own prerogative, is a private business, but as you will find out, or as we have found out, if a person's not going to make, obey the law, you can put any law on the books that you want, and it isn't going to do a thing. Safe, responsible gun storage and handling at home is a must, but also making sure that those who know that they may commit a crime or are planning on committing a crime with a gun in our community will be punished to the fullest extent of the law.
Ms. Taylor? You, you answered that, okay.
The last question, do you think we need to increase the Affordable Housing Fund? If yes, where do you think we might get that fund from?
Ms. Burgess?
Yes, and maybe not just in the context of that fund. So I think this question is referring to the fact that we have a $1 million fund that each year is dedicated towards affordable housing. We are talking currently, as we're implementing the most recent recommendations from the Affordable Housing Committee, that we need to do something much more significant. You know, $1 million in a year is not going to move the needle, and so looking at how we can be pooling, for example, funds that we've received through the American Rescue Plan Act, affordable housing funds that come from the fee in lieu paid by developers and other sources, so we could do something, you know, maybe 10 times that size rather than just a million dollars.
We need to get to the root cause of why the housings are so expensive in this area. We need to keep in mind that for every amount of city dollars that we decide to shift to affordable housing, it gets paid by somebody. We can tax the builders, great, they'll increase the price. We can raise property taxes, that drives out the middle class. We have to be able to find out how to make houses affordable from the ground up, not just throw extra money at it.
Ms. Taylor?
Yes, I, I do agree, we need to put more money into it. I think we've gradually, over the years, been increasing it quite a bit, and, and it's been helpful. We've found ways to, to spend that money. I, I believe that encouraging developers, there's a fee in lieu that they're either required to have the 10% affordable housing, but if they don't, then they can pay a fee in lieu upwards even to a million dollars, and that helps to go into that pot. I think there are many federal ways that we can continue to, to get those dollars to help with that, and I think that's what we need to do.
Thank you. Now we'll begin our closing statements. Each candidate will now have two minutes to make a closing statement. Mr. Borschart, your closing statement.
Well, like I said, when I first came to Iowa City, the, the thing that we had to worry about the most was a bunch of drunk college kids running around, and I think at one time, we had 1,200, 1,300 OWIs that the police department did. The last couple of years, we've sent forward, we've sent a message to those in our community and other areas of the state and the Midwest that we will tolerate bad behavior. We had the Floyd riots, there were people that peacefully protested, we had people that damaged property. These two ladies decided that we were going to excuse people that committed crimes and recommended that the district attorney not charge them. Laura has penned a piece in May of 2021 saying that we need to abolish the police. We need to get our police department fully engaged with the community and get full community involvement in policing. We need to set forth a standard that everybody's welcome. We don't want a policeman on every corner, but you cannot come in here and raise heck in our city. We had a fun, well, when I first came here, there was a lot of fun and happiness and, and just young, young people just doing what they needed to do, and it was a lot of fun. It seems to have turned the corner, and we do have an issue that people fail to acknowledge. We need to clean up this city, get it back on track, and move forward. I appreciate your vote on the 10th, and thank you.
Pauline Taylor, your closing statements.
In my introduction, I mentioned the importance of listening to what a person has to say. I will strive to listen actively and empathetically while being engaged, responsive, and collaborative, giving close and thoughtful attention to what is being said. You have a voice, and I will listen. My life experience, passion, and dedication to help people in need has carried over into my work on the city council. I enjoy doing this work, would love to be able to continue this important service to Iowa City community that I've loved for over 49 years.
Laura Burgess, your closing statements.
What I've learned in my first four years on city council is that there is so much hope and love and joy in this community, and it is amazing to me that as we hear the fear, we hear the concern, we hear that there is, that things are worse than they have been. I, my lived experience of my entire life in this community is the opposite, and what I see is so much opportunity for all the people who are coming to live here, for all the people who have chosen to stay here, for all the people who are struggling right now because it is a really, really, really hard time. I also see how we're working together. I see the opportunities for collaboration, I see the opportunities for finding that common ground and running, executing, getting things done. I believe that's what I bring to the Iowa City City Council, is that passion to push things forward as aggressively as we possibly can to obtain the change that we need and deserve in this community. The strategic plan that we passed in December of 2022 is an amazing vision for our community, and I think we need people in every seat on the city council who are working as hard as they possibly can to be executing on that vision. I will collaborate with leaders throughout the region, I will continue to work incredibly hard, and I just feel like we're really just getting started, and I have so much hope for the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you to our candidates and those of you in attendance, those watching at home in the Iowa City AV team for making this video cast and livestream possible. We would like to remind you that the views expressed in this forum are those of the candidates, and the sponsorship of the forum is not an endorsement of any candidate. More information about voting and the candidates can be found at vote41.org. And remember to vote in the primary on or before October 10th. Good night. Thank you for coming.
Very nice to meet you, Laura. Very nice to meet you also.